Okay, Commissioners, we're going to move to public meeting item number three. An application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Bronx, 558 Grand Concourse, the Bronx Post Office, an individual landmark and interior landmark. Dock at number 165723, block 443, lot 400. A modern-style, modern classical-style government building designed by Thomas Harlan Ellett and built in 1935-37. Application is to construct rooftop addition, modify and create interior and exterior masonry openings and replace and install infill, modify an exterior terrace and loading platform, replace a canopy and install interior and exterior signage, interior power connections and vestibule, and exterior stairs, light fixtures and mechanical equipment. This was first presented January 20th of 2015.
Good morning, Commissioners, Abby and all the preservation staff. The application is for alterations at the individual and interior landmark at 558 Grand Concourse, which occupies the entire block bounded on the left by Grand Concourse, the north by East 150th Street, east by Anthony J. Griffin Place, and the south by East 149th Street. So the application was first reviewed by its commission at the public hearing on January 20th. This proposal included several exterior alterations, including reconstruction of a rooftop addition and bulkheads, changing masonry openings throughout the base, first floor level penthouse, modifications to the existing loading dock and canopy, and installing stairs, signage, light poles and light fixtures throughout the exterior. The application also included alterations to the designated interior, including removing masonry, installing signage, sprinklers, cameras, and vestibule. At the hearing, some Commissioners expressed concerns regarding the following five aspects of the proposal. The first was regarding the signage at the rooftop level. The second was with regard to the form and visibility of the proposed rooftop accretions. The third was with regard to the masonry opening at the southeast corner of the base of the building. And the fourth was with regard to the design and necessity of the proposed glass stairs at the eastern A.J. Griffin facade. And finally, the fifth was with regard to the placement and design of the canopy extension and signage at the existing canopy above the loading dock at A.J. Griffin Place. So the applicants have revised the proposal and provided supplemental information to respond to these concerns, and they're here to discuss this.
Thank you, Abby. Okay, we'll reopen the hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners, Cass, Stackleburg, Pivens, Crazeworth and partners. Here with the design team, Young Woo, Jay Valdora from Studio V. I'll take you through the revisions, and if there's specific questions on any of the design elements, the team can step in and elaborate if necessary. But I think, based on your comments, we've worked to refine the design, and I think we've ended up in a place that's better than where we started as it is in the case. The other thing I want to just mention at the outset is, and I didn't mention this last month when we presented, is that we are working with New York State Store Preservation Office and the Park Service on the store tax credits for this project. So not only do we need to meet your standards, but we need to meet particularly the interior standards. And we've been working closely with New York SHPO on this process, as we can work closely with you and your staff. There are sort of three primary elements that we want to address. The roof, in particular, what we've done is condensed and regularize the roof elements to both simplify and reduce the visibility of what's on the roof. The stairs, we've refined the design, but I think we've also refined the argument to explain sort of why this is an essential element for our proposal. Some modifications to the canopy and the signage, and then also adjustments to the masonry openings at the corner of A.J. Griffin, which brings back more solidity, which I think is something that the Commissioners were looking for. So first focusing on the roof. Across the top, this is the existing, the one in the middle is what you saw last month, and on the far right is the proposal. And I think the key thing here is what had been sort of an L-shaped addition with stair bulkheads at the, close to the perimeter of the penthouse, now is a more regular rectilinear addition, and these bulkheads have been pushed back 12 feet, which affects the, positively affects the...
So you've eliminated the L?
We've eliminated the L, right. So let me get into sort of a little more clarification. This is an existing plan. You may remember, there's a very tall cooling tower here at the corner, and then this large bulkhead on the back at A.J. Griffin Place. This is what you saw before. Again, this sort of L shape with bulkheads only five and a half feet back from the parapet at the penthouse. This represents the change. So we've eliminated the L and basically sort of squared this off. And what that is, is an enclosure that has glass panels that are removable. So what you saw before with a sort of flexibility of sort of opening and closing this addition, we still are proposing that, but what you'll have is a much more regular, rectilinear enclosure on the roof. And I think in terms of the geometries of the building, it works much, works much better with the base and the penthouse that are below it. As well, these bulkheads have been pushed back, so they now align with the front edge of the addition, and that greatly reduces the visibility. As well, this cooling tower, the previous proposal had it in this corner. We've basically eliminated this volume here and been able to slide the cooling tower over and tuck it in to the main volume, which affects, positively affects the visibility from the east. These are bulkhead plans that illustrate...
Could you just go back and explain what, is that a stair then?
Right. So this, this right now, as shown, is a stair downstairs. I think we're still working through the interior workings of the connections between the penthouse level below this and the bulkhead, sorry, and the addition. The stair may not be as wide as it's currently shown on the plan.
But there would be an enclosure for the stair, right?
Correct.
So that drawing is not...
Right.
Well, is that the whole retractable roof portion?
Correct. This is sort of, right, this is enclosed and can be opened up.
Okay, but it's, but it can, so it's open to sky?
As it's shown, it can be.
But there are no walls, is that right? Or are there just posts or...
The structure are posts and a beam across them, but, and I'll show you in the elevation, there are glass panels that enclose that space. These, excuse me, these elements are skylight panels that are at the ground plane of the addition.
Okay.
Okay. And then a sort of upper roof plan, this is what you saw last month, again, sort of the L shape with this retractable roof and the bulkheads much closer to the parapet. And again, the proposed, and I'll show you visibility studies in just a moment. The existing elevation on the Grand Concourse, on the top is what you saw last month. Here is, represents the current proposal. And I think you can see, but basically we're showing now this glazed enclosure around this regular volume. The bulkheads, which will be clad in zinc, have been pushed back, and then this volume here, where the cooling tower enclosure is, that's also been tucked in to a place closer to the bulkhead. The existing 150th Street elevation, so again, the proposed, previously proposed on the top and the current proposed on the bottom, showing this in the open position with this cantilevered frame and the posts supporting it. The A.J. Griffin Place elevation, the existing, and then the proposed on the top and the revised below. And a few things just to point out. The signage that is shown at the top of the parapet, which was a concern of the Commissioners, that's been eliminated from the presentation. I'll speak a bit more about the detailing of the stair, but the stair has been sort of simplified, but it's also been made narrower and held back from the corner. And you can also see the change in these two storefronts. This has been slid in, and this storefront now is much narrower and aligns with the window, with the window above. The 149th Street existing elevation, and then the previously proposed above, and the current proposed below. Modifications to the depth of the stair or parapet in this elevation, and I'll show you more detail in just a minute. Looking at the comparable visibility studies, this is an existing photograph, photo from last month with the previous mock-up. This is what you saw last month, you had, and I think this was largely some of your concern, the sort of different volumes that one sees across the roof and the current proposal. So from this vantage, the bulkheads are just peeking up over this parapet, but you see a much more sort of regular and symmetrical addition that really speaks to the sort of tapered nature of the plinth, the main volume of the building, the original penthouse, and then the one-story addition. And that's how it would appear when the sides have been removed for use of the roof. From the southeast, the existing with the mock-up, what you saw last month, and then the current proposal. And just to toggle between these two, so first, from this view, this enclosure for the cooling tower is eliminated, and this volume is actually pushed back now, so that visibility is reduced. There was also concern about the loubered nature of that enclosure. Those are now, will be solid zinc panels. And then some additional views, these may be easier to see in your handouts, looking south on the concourse. So the previous proposal on the left and the current proposal on the right. Again, there's sort of fewer volumes on the roof and a sort of cleaner reading of the addition. A little bit closer to the corner of 150th and the concourse, again, the reduction in visibility of these bulkheads by pulling them back, I think, has a very positive effect on the building. And then as you go down further south on the concourse, the enclosure here becomes visible, and it's seen within the context of the other rooftop features. From the west, the proposal on the left from what you saw before and the change on the right, and I think the big change is moving this cooling tower enclosure back into the south, which has a positive effect on the reading of the building. These are some section drawings through the roof, what you saw before, and then the new proposed. Basically, this just illustrates the glass enclosures that will be around the perimeter of the one-story addition. There are major changes to this section. This drawing also illustrates the change from the loubered panels around mechanical enclosure to a solid zinc enclosure. Turning to A.J. Griffin Place, I wanted to just sort of reiterate a point that we made last month, in particular, in the way A.J. Griffin Place is used currently, but how it will be used as part of this project. And I think this is sort of a key component to understanding why we see the stair as being a really essential part of this project. A.J. Griffin Place right now is sort of a loading space. It's a Belgium block-lined street, and it's used by the postal service or had been used by the postal service for truck traffic. And the way we see this space is this sort of new opportunity. It's a space that's going to be active, it's going to be the front door for the commercial uses on the floors above. If you remember, there's this, these entries with the recessed doors, stairs, and elevator or elevated that will take office users up to the upper floors of the building. But it's also going to be a place of great activity. And what the stairs, which are shown in plan here and here, what these will allow us to do is bring people directly from A.J. Griffin, which will be a sort of gathering place, directly upstairs. And we have diagrams in the set that sort of illustrate what it takes to get from this point all the way around back to here versus being able to circulate directly from this side of the building directly up to this plinth, which you see in plan here. So this is, this is the proposed plan with the stairs on either side. This plinth, which is really sort of off, there is no access today, it's fenced off, there's a gate. We see this as a sort of a new sidewalk, actually, as part of this project. The building and the block slopes very steeply down as it goes to the east. What this allows us to do is to have this sort of flat sidewalk attached to the building, and it'll allow sort of porosity from the plinth area directly into the building, and this direct access from here directly up to here instead of this dead end that exists today is something that's very important to the program of the project. I'll show you the design changes in just a minute. If we go through these quickly, or pass through these, these are upper floor plans, not necessarily important unless you have questions, I can come back to them. This is a diagram just illustrating how currently this plinth, there's a dead end. And right now, there's a fence here and a fence here. The postal service has people off of this area, but we see this as a real asset as part of the project. There will be access directly into the new postal lobby that's created here, adjacent to the historic lobby. And this allows people, this will allow people to circulate, and we will invite people to circulate around the building. So having, having access from here up to the plinth and here down is really an important part of the new program. This diagram just shows if you were to start at this corner, it's almost two city blocks to get to this point, and there will be entries here, as you've seen previously, into this new commercial space at the main floor. With the stairs, this is, you know, from this corner, it's 200 feet to this point, just simply up the stairs. This involves climbing actually a quite steep grade and then coming back around. So this allows a visual connection to the plinth, but also obviously a much more direct, more direct connection, and it's something that we feel is very, very important to the project.
Sorry, just to maybe add to that, you could enter from the lower floor.
Sure.
So, because this was a point that I mean, you know, I understand the need to have access, but my only question was, at that time, was could you just enter the lower floor and go up?
So the way, I'm glad you asked, because I didn't, I sort of went past this. This elevator, which will stop at the main floor, although this is really the office lobby, and I think the idea is to not have people going to the main floor, to the retail, to those uses, mixing with the office tenants, because this will sort of be their sole elevator to the spaces above.
So you'd be, this is the lower level, you'd be going through...
This is the lowest level.
So you'd go through those two stores on that side, right? You'd enter there.
Right. So right now, this space is probably going to be one single tenant. There isn't a stair from this main level, a ground floor upstairs. So the other thing too is, if you came in here, you could find your way probably to a stair to go up, but there's no visual connection. There's no connection between sort of this and then the next floor above. You'd have to sort of know your way around. So what this allows us to do, anybody coming from the other buildings across to the east, this stair clearly connects this space with this really main focal space. These stairs are upstairs, this is an idea potentially of connecting them, but I think more likely this will be, this level, the main floor, will be independent from the floor below.
All right. Anything else, or we can take...
So this is, these are, this is how the plinth is today. These doghouses will be removed to allow for better access. This is the stair that you saw previously. It was designed very close to the corner, as was this storefront. The proposed pulls it back and aligns with the block, the granite block here, and also adds about a foot and a half to this corner and greatly reduces the width of this opening. The other thing is, this new stair is sort of more simply designed as just a steel, simple steel channel stringer, as opposed to what was presented before that had a sort of more elaborate folded detail. And this, I think, more clearly illustrates that there will just be the removal of the balusters in between here. This original block and this block will remain. These now line up with the edge of this existing granite. So this corner now is more substantial, and this storefront aligns now with the window above. And then you can just see this simple stringer. This stair also now is a foot narrower, so it's tighter to the building, so it doesn't have as much presence as it did from what you saw before. Existing photo and the proposed rendering of the new stair design, the existing entry. We've refined this detail, you can see the detailing from before with a sort of folded steel stair, and now it's just a sort of simple planar treatment, sort of much closer, I think, to the planarity of the existing building. This signage, which you also commented on, now is shown as centered on the canopy, and the steel underneath the canopy is shown accurately now. It just projects out three feet past the front edge of the existing canopy, so it doesn't have as much of a presence as it did in the previous rendering. Sections of the stair just to show it tighter to the building, sections through the canopy, and then again, this corner. So this is what you saw before, with this much larger storefront, and now the proposed, it's a change of about 11 or 12 feet of granite that will remain at that corner to give it much more solidity at the corner. The previous proposal, so again, this signage you saw before, you had concern with it, and the off-center nature of the signage above the canopy, and this is our current proposal. The signage of the parapet has been eliminated, and that over the canopy has been centered, and then this simplification of the detailing for the stair.
Thank you, Cass. Are there questions? Yes, Roberto?
The need for the two stairs, well, we put symmetrical last night, but what was the, you wanted to, you just have people go, you will have that many people?
Right. And I think we don't want to prejudice one side over the other, but I think there's also an architectural rationale in that this building is so rigidly symmetrical, that having it just on one side seemed a bit...
No, but you didn't really need, I mean, so you did it for symmetrical.
Well, no, I think...
But did you, which side needed it most?
There are commercial spaces on either side of that main floor. So the idea is that people will be circulating both this, the south side and the north side as well. I think we're probably anticipating more traffic here, but I think there will be traffic there that will go directly up to the postal, the new post office. So I think it's important to have people be able to make that direct connection instead of having to walk all the way around.
So which floor, so go over the floors again. The first floor is retail?
Let me go back to the floor plans quickly. So this is sort of the, this is the main floor, so you see the stairs. This is A.J. Griffin Place up at the top. So these are the two stairs. So this is the historic postal lobby. We've talked through the program there. The post office is relocating to this space, so people can circulate up here to get in or from the back if they're coming from the east. And then there is sort of market use and cafe restaurant uses along here, and office, office circulation here and restrooms back there. That's the sort of the main, the main floor.
But the post office is just that part?
The post office is this area here, so we have a new entry for them here, and that will be, you know, there'll be access from this way through this existing accessible ramp and from the stairs on the opposite side.
Okay. Other questions? John, you have a question?
I'm going to stand up to do this. There may be a great answer to this, but would it be a tragedy if the stairways instead were within the balcony? You know, in other words, between that wall and here, and went down from the surface of the balcony?
Right. That's something that we looked at after the public hearing last month, and let me go back to this slide. I think one of our concerns with doing that is, this is, this is the front edge of the plinth, and dropping a stair sort of in front of these doors, that's where it would land, basically sort of in this space. And this is, this is sort of tough space already, because you're sort of subterranean in a way, because you're below the plinth. So the concern was sort of dropping a stair in front of those openings. Jake, perhaps speak more specifically about some of the things that we looked at, if you'd like.
But I think, John, was that what you were suggesting?
Yeah, somewhere in there, whether it's a face or it was towards the building.
I mean, it's possible to do that, you just lose...
You lose the space on the terrace.
You lose retail at the corner.
This is also, what does the depth of this, 20 feet? 15, 20 feet, the depth here? So by putting a stair in here, you then also lose the use of that area where the opening is.
Frankly, I thought that was a good idea. We really tried to do it, and then once we did it, it got really complicated. We had to cut big holes in the historic fabric, we had to lose a lot of area, we had to do unusual waterproofing details, because that would be an exterior stair wrapped around it. So once we studied it, because I originally thought that might work quite well, I felt it didn't work as well, and we had to make much greater changes to the fabric of the opening.
All right. Any other questions? Yes.
On the room, so explaining, and what is it that you were explaining, is it be open or closed, and is that like some automatic? When is it, when is it not there?
I don't think we've figured out exactly what the mechanism is, but it is a, I don't know if you're familiar with this sort of a nano-wall system, which is a glass panels that sort of fold back. That's sort of think that, that kind of idea. So it's, it's based on weather and season, you know, obviously, it will be weather tight when it needs to be.
And what is the purpose of it? Is to bridge up what?
The client intends to use it as restaurant space and hospitality space, so it would probably be some kind of a restaurant with an outdoor space. And then in the summer, their intent is they'd like to keep it open, because they think that'd be really wonderful. But it's sometimes in the winter or when it's colder, they could enclose it and still use that space.
Because on those two, on the drawings that you show, looking from the rear, but you see, there's a great difference in how it appears, because it really disappears more or seems like more, your rooftop seems to blend in more when you don't have the opening.
Right.
You know, it looks more like it's part of the...
Right.
...volume of the roof than when you go to the next one.
Right.
You know, it's more obvious that it's something very new and different.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I think we, I couldn't tell you sort of what the timing is, because I think we don't know what the program exactly is going to be.
But could you, I don't know, introduce some elements which will at least frame this, so even when, I think the thing, it feels like it's floating. So if you could, I don't know, introduce some vertical elements that could remain, and then you could still retract your roof and fill it in with glazing and maybe work with our staff on that.
It's about a floating roof.
Yeah, I like the thought. Well, no, I like floating roofs. I just think that in terms of, because I guess I'm looking at now as this individual landmark, I'd like the rooftop accretions to somehow look, it's not so new. I like, I like floating, but I mean, it's not, it looks like it's part of...
We're clearly trying to strike a balance between really respecting the character of the building, the symmetry of the building proportions, clearly the horizontality of the building, especially at the top, but also we respect the fact that a new addition, while highly sympathetic to all the characteristics of the building, should also appear new, and that's one of the principles that we generally follow, but it must be very sympathetic to the character of the building. We've worked hard to try to find that balance. I recall at the last meeting, many of the Commissioners even expressed the opinion, if you're doing a rooftop addition, it should be visible and it should be expressed in its own way. We're trying to find that balance.
Okay. Any other comments, or questions rather? No comments? Okay, thank you. I think the changes that they made are very responsive to what the Commission had identified were a few concerns. I think all of us who were here that day in general supported this project. It's a great project for, for the Bronx and a very, really fantastic example of adaptive reuse. I think the changes that we had asked for, just in terms of the roof, was to in fact sort of rationalize the various accretions, and I think they've done that. I think it helps a lot that they've moved the two bulkheads, which were kind of out there, and, and I think it's now much more symmetrical, and I don't have a problem with the floating roof, but if it's, I think if we wanted them to make it more solid, I think they could probably do that. I think the changes to the rear, which included the removal of the signage, which I think is very good, and the resolution of the bulkheads and the material, I think also addresses many of the concerns that the Commission had raised, I know Fred had, and he can comment on that. But the shift from louvers to the metal, I think, helps a lot, and I think they've removed some of those pieces that were sort of sticking out as well. And that entire facade, I think, has been rationalized better. They've made the corner much more solid, which I knew was a comment by one of our Commissioners, and I think by making it more symmetrical in terms of its signage has also helped to respect the very, very strong symmetry of the existing building. Yes, Fred, and then, and then Michael?
Okay. Yeah, I agree with all of that. I thought it was a great proposal before, it's been made much, even better. I was dubious about the stair in the back and thought that it had to do what Jay was talking about, go down internally to really resolve itself there, realizing that that was going to take away commercial space and add a corner, no less, which is not necessarily a very happy urbanistic idea. But I thought maybe to protect the landmark, that was what would be required, notwithstanding the schemes that we didn't see that you talked about. I think the way you've resolved it was a thinner stair, which has a break, which you probably need for code reasons anyway, coming down on both sides evenly. It's actually quite an elegant resolution, and I can support it the way it is. I like the floating roof, as I said, I don't think there's anything wrong with that at all, but if there are other Commissioners who do, I think it can be resolved by putting two posts in the corner.
Yes, Michael?
I was just going to...
Okay. Other comments? Other comments? Okay, uh, any other comments? Are we, uh, ready to, um, uh, move to decision? Uh, floating roof?
Yeah, so I didn't see it the first time, but I, in comparison, uh, this looks, um, like it did in a lot of, uh, views from what was said before. Um, so, no one else? That's the most around five.
Okay, all right, very good. So, uh, John, you're okay?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I, I think it's a, you know, it's a, and you, when you view it in real life and not in pictures, you know, uh, it's a, it's a, it's always been a very Y-chromosomal building. I mean, it's just, you know, dominant, sitting at the top of this crest. And, and everything that was done to it, I think, retaining the symmetry and, um, and even the building up a little bit of the height, it just makes it even that much more of a, a dominating structure. I love it.
Okay, terrific. All right, we can close the hearing then. And, um, Roberta, would you like to read the resolution?
Sure. Um, in the matter of five, about five fifty-eighth grand concourse, post office, individual landmark, interior landmark, I recommend approval, um, finding that the proposed alterations will support the adaptive reuse of the building without eliminating the ceiling or diminishing any of the significant architectural features of the exterior of the building or the designated interior. That the setback, simply designed rectilinear rooftop addition will be compatible with the formal block form of the building and consistent with this historic organizational composition, which featured a simply designed penthouse of this type. That the multi-light double hall windows at the rear facade, which are to be removed, are not significant components of the overall design. That the margin select monumental arch window openings are removing simply death-designed stone panels beneath them and the replacement of the existing modern windows and roofs with new off-white painted metal multi-light windows and doors will maintain the basic form, prominent multi-light penetration pattern and the level of articulation of the monumental windows. That the enlargement of these window openings will be screened from most views from the surrounding streets by the barrel, straight, balustrade and will maintain a regularized pattern when seen from the terrace. That the removal of a portion of the balustrade and concrete paving in construction of a new stone stair at the southwestern corner of the terrace will create an entrance that is compatible with the monumental scale of the terrace and will be well-integrated into the overall composition of, of the composition of the building. That the proposed enlarged and new masonry openings at the granite base and penthouse will be in keeping with the secondary openings typically found in buildings, at buildings of this type, scale and age in terms of placement and form and their size will not overwhelm or diminish the perceived solidity of the base or draw undue attention to themselves at the penthouse. That the masonry opening at the southeast corner of the base will be modest in size and in set from the corner, maintaining the solidity of the base of the building. That the proposed infield for the new and enlarged openings at the granite base and the existing historic loading dock entrances will be simply designed and feature a predominant of clear glazing, uh, which will be consistent with the utilitarian character of the historic infield at the base and the openness of the loading docks and will help them maintain subordinate, uh, to the significant design features of the building. That the recessed placement of some of the infield at the loading docks and use of security roll-down gates will further recall the historic openness and function of these bays. That the enlarged concrete loading dock central stair and proposed metal canopy extension will be well-scaled to the entrances and keeping with historic service features, which were present at the building in terms of placement and industrial character. That the simple design, modest size, metal and glass materials and symmetrical placement of the new stairs and racks at the rear facade will help these installations to support both the unity of the composition of alterations at and near the loading docks and the historic symmetry of the facade. That the limited removal of plain masonry and modern infield within the interior designated lobby will not detract from the historic organization of the room, which historically, historically featured openings to adjoining rooms or diminish the perceived size or boundaries of the room. That the proposed vestibule will closely recall the historic vestibules in terms of the placement size, materials, finish, configuration and basic design. That the proposed middle large letter signage at the exterior and interior of the building and the metal signs anchored to the terrace will be well-scaled to their proposed locations and compatible with the building in terms of materials and finishes. That the overall mountain size of the proposed signage will not overwhelm the building. That the proposed integrated lighting and the metal signage letters at the building facades and metal signs at the terrace will provide subtle illumination of the letters without overwhelming the building or site. That the flag post at the, at the northern facade will be in keeping with the type of signage historically found at buildings of this type, style and age, and their modest size, limited number, symmetrical placement, and some design will help them, um, remain a subordinate, harmonious, uh, presence. And that the installation of flush mounted lights within the concrete terrace paving and largely screened from view by the, of that balustrade will not detract from insignificant architectural features.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This application's been approved.